Good evening. Welcome to the New Kent County Planning Commission meeting. Call this meeting to order at 6:30. And if we could stand for a moment of silence and pledge of leisures. Thank you. Mr. Rider, can you do the roll call, please?
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
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 Hathaway?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here. And we have a quorum. Next, approval of the minutes of the June 16th meeting. Does anyone have any corrections?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
I'm not hearing any suggestions for any alterations. I just, I move that we adopt the minutes for the June Planning Commission meeting as written.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Have a motion to approve the minutes. No corrections. Mr. Rider, could you poll the members?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
I'll abstain, I wasn't here last month.
Reverend Hathaway?
Abstain.
Ms. Thomas?
...site that you can see here, as well as here in the present. And the presence of that bonded river stone wall would impede the ability to install a sidewalk along the frontage. A portion of that wall would have to be demolished in order to do so. And avoiding impacts to the wall would make the logical placement of the sidewalk forward of the wall and therefore in the V-dot right-of-way, which obviously is not preferable either. So in staff's consideration of the requests, I found that the requested exceptions would comply with the findings necessary to grant an exception to the design requirements of the Commerce Corridor Overlay District and as articulated in Section 98-1071. And in conclusion, by reconciling the reasons for the exception as stated in the applicant's narrative statement with the requirements necessary to grant such an exception as stated in the county code, staff is recommending approval of the exception request. So that's about the end of my presentation here, but happy to answer any other questions the commissioners may have. Also, William Feltz, the applicant, is here tonight, in case y'all had any questions for him or if he wanted to make a brief statement at all.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you considered any of the stormwater block? Gravel has a tendency to move on you and/or either sink, whereas I know down in Toddwater area and a lot of the condos and housing developments, they will use the blocks to control stormwater.
You're talking like permeable pavers or something like that?
It's like a brick with holes in it.
No, not to be honest, no, it's not something that we considered. This parking lot is so small, we're actually proposing to amend the soils around the entire site to an uncompacted state for stormwater, which will benefit the area, I guess, slightly for stormwater. That area has a really bad tendency to flood, but just the continued use of a parking over top of those types of materials, it's not something that I would ever recommend and something that's going to be used daily. We usually use those for like overflow parking, just because they have a high tendency to fail just from lack of maintenance.
Along the lines of Mr. Townsend, I've seen successful use of open cell pavers and pavers in general. An example is at Pierce's Barbecue in Lightfoot. Just for the staff, would open cell pavers or brick pavers, would that kind of pavement system meet, in your eyes, the requirement for a hardened parking area?
Yeah, from the stormwater perspective, it would still be impervious for water quality purposes. Where the benefit is, is the potential infiltration. With pavers, there's typically more infiltration testing that's required to meet the design specs that are laid out by Department of Environmental Quality at the state. It is an option to use. Like Mr. Feltz said, the proposal or the proposed stormwater plan includes almost seventeen cubic yards of soil amendments in the surrounding area that the sheet flow from the parking lot will run into. That will be incorporated by rototiller, essentially increasing or bettering the hydrologic soil group. So based on the stormwater calc that have been reviewed so far, it'll increase time of concentration and still meet water quality requirements. It's a less invasive and testing approach because there's not quite this specification that needs to be met as permeable pavers.
The second question is, in my lifetime, I've seen many of stone or aggregate parking lots exist, but ultimately what happens because of the wear and tear and returning motions and the motion of the vehicles on top of that surface, ultimately that surface becomes hardened, either by asphalt or concrete. Currently, we don't have any checks or balancing systems from our approved site plan that wants to prove if somebody goes back and hardens it, there's no reexamination on the stormwater deficit that that hardening may cause, is there?
Not generally with by right development. With the exception request, I think it would be reasonable for the commission to make a condition, kind of along those lines. I think from my standpoint as the stormwater plan reviewer, rather than requiring a curb and gutter type system be installed with the resurfacing, whether it's asphalt or concrete, because that would get into potentially an amended stormwater plan requirement. You could condition that if the parking lot was ever resurfaced in the future, that the owner be required to install gravel diaphragms or similar energy dissipating devices around the perimeter of the parking lot. So you're still spreading that flow, releasing it at a slower rate, and staying kind of in line with the, what would be the approved stormwater plan. So you wouldn't trigger that full plan amendment. You would just, you know, do a diaphragm, which the state has specifications on as well.
Okay, I would suggest that that be a condition of the approval.
I guess we could put that on the plan now. We could put like a future pavement section or something on the plan.
Yeah, I think if the commission wants to use that as a condition of approval, should they wish to approve it, then we would certainly coordinate that note being on the plan set. So that way, in the approved plan, we can go back and say, you know, hey, you resurfaced this, this was a condition of approval based on exception, you know, PC 14-25. So I think we could coordinate that.
And that would carry with the plan regardless of Mr. Phelps or any subsequent owner?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. I would tend to think that would be appropriate. Thank you.
Any more questions? Any other commissioners, any questions or?
Sir, a question I have for, you know, the sidewalk. Obviously, there's some challenges here, but Commerce Overlay exists so that we can make things better going forward. What condition is that wall in? If we're basing the premise that we can't do a sidewalk because we want to preserve the wall, what condition is that wall in?
It's an affair condition, depending on what the definition of fair is for that wall. It's been there for quite a while. I think it probably has more historical value than anything.
So is that something that the wall could be restored? Any work that needs to be done? If we're going to bypass the requirement to put a sidewalk in because of the wall, it seems like the wall should be brought up to standard so it's functional and visually appealing and that type of thing for, you know, some period to come?
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think the owner, he's actively working on cleaning up the site. I think he has patched and fixed a bunch of the wall. I think he's kind of at the point now where he was doing too much, needed a site plan to actually have done to move forward with stuff. But I fully expect him to actually pretty the wall up, if you will. I think it really could use some pressure washing would fix most of the problems. There are some spots along the left side that he's going to tear out a few sections and put the wall back so that we can put an ADA ramp into the building.
And my only other comment is the stone that we'd use if granted for the parking, is there something nicer than gravel that could be used, a more decorative stone? If we're, you know, it's number one of the white stones or number 57, but you know, the nice kind of driveway stone or something? So it's more visually appealing than gravel?
I'm proposing just 21A stone. It's just kind of like crush and run, not so much 57 stone. That doesn't really compact for a parking lot. But yeah, I can't say no. I mean, there's tons of different types of stone out there that could be put on it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Would the site also be handicap friendly, trying to get out of a vehicle?
Yeah, the actual handicap spot and aisle will be concrete. And then there'll be a new sidewalk that actually connects it to the top of the building. Yes, if you can see along the right side, if you're looking at that, that whole area is going to be concreted in. There'll be a sidewalk that runs across the back of the parking spaces. And the first two parking spaces will be concrete to allow for ADA access into the office.
Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Townsend?
In order to address and protect and promote the public convenience necessity and the general welfare of good zoning practices in the county, I move to adopt Resolution Number PC 14-25 to forward this exception request made by William Feltz on behalf of Overbike Properties, NKC, and LLC to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
It was that?
But that would also mean that I would like to add the question that Mr. Bennett had suggested.
Could you clarify that amendment?
Should any future improvements that require paving or additional paving on the site, stormwater management facilities to accommodate that increased impervious area would be included in that paving operation.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett and Ms. Townsend. So we have a motion to approve PC 14-25, the exception request. And with the amendment, as Mr. Bennett stated, Mr. Roder, did you get that amendment? And with that, could you poll the members, sir?
Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
I'm staying.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Motion passes. Favorable recommendation for the exception request made by Mr. Feltz. Thank you, sir. Now on to public hearings. We have none. And we'll move on to the chairman's report. I really do not have much to report, or have anything to report, actually. It's been so far likely a slow summer for us, so. And we'll move to Reverend Hathaway, Plan RBA report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two things. The Planning Commission, the Plan RBA has finished compiling the strategic plan, and it basically, they've taken the plans from each of the nine jurisdictions and come up with a plan, and we've approved it. The executive committee approved the first. It came through the full commission. There was some discussion about it, but basically approved as it was presented. And so all of the county administrators have a copy of that plan. The second thing that we had is the need to look at some additional funding. Roughly 80% of our funding comes from the federal government, and as of this month's meeting, they've not lost any, but there's an anticipation that they will. And so they're looking at additional funding sources.
Thank you, Reverend.
Sure.
Now on to commissioner reports. Mr. LaRochelle?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Thomas?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Johnson?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Dobrowski?
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes, I do have something. We have an opportunity here in New Kent County for our farmers, our nursery workers, golf courses, wineries. If there's any pesticides that need to be disposed of, we do have a disposal program. We have one coming up in Prince George on the 6th of August. So if you have any questions or whatever, I would ask that you call the Virginia Cooperative Extension Office here in New Kent County, and we can make sure that this information gets sent to you very quickly. But it's a really good thing to do for our environment to try to get rid of all of this unwanted pesticides rather than putting it in through the landfill. And the state of Virginia takes care of all of the cost for you.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Reverend Hathaway?
Let me give the House and the Judiciary Committee, excuse me, thank you.
All right, we met this month. Initially, we came up with 22 proposals and just realized that that was just far too many to submit to the board. And so we've narrowed it down to seven with the goal of narrowing it down to three with some implementation strategies. The goal is to present it to the Board of Supervisors in their November meeting. So we've got some work to do.
Can you expand a little bit on what those three goals are now, or is it a little premature?
We've not come down, we're still at seven.
Still at seven.
And the goal is in our August meeting to get it down to three.
Good luck.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Schmidt?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir. I'm going to go back a couple of months to something that Mr. LaRochelle mentioned for consideration. I think now is probably the proper time for us to maybe put kind of an action plan in progress is data centers. Or, yeah, data centers. Our neighbor in Charles City County, I think, has a proposal, if not has voted on possible data center installation. So I'm going to call Mr. Rogge or Mr. Silva, and how do we put into motion that we start maybe coming up with a game plan for either putting in or establishing use criteria or performance criteria for data centers or even, I know we're premature of the zoning ordinance, but I think we're almost at the point that we don't want to be late to town on this.
Yeah, so we can certainly address that. It's obviously a big, hot topic of discussion with what's going on next door. We've started receiving citizen inquiries about data centers. We've kind of already started down that path.
Oh, good.
The Board of Supervisors and Economic Development have gotten with a consultant to look at potential, the potential for a technology overlay district. So that consultant is looking at available economic development properties, looking at utilities that are available at the sites, whether it's power, water, you name it. And the consultant obviously has a lot more experience in locating data centers and where they go. So they're currently drafting up a map of available properties and kind of ranking how those sites fall with, would it be suited for a data center? Does it even have the ability to support that type of development? And that's kind of the first step in our process in figuring out where they may or may not go, where they could go. And from those conversations, I think we should have that map within the next month or so from the consultant. So from that point, we will dive into how do we want to permit them? What processes do we look at? You know, in the technology overlay district, our data center is by right, which would certainly require a performance standard, so to speak. Do they require CUP? Similarly, a few years ago, other than that, but with solar generation facilities and battery storage projects, you know, we adopted performance standards in the code that outlines kind of the base level of requirements, but we left the conditional use permit as a necessary step in that process. So there's different ways to go about that, and I think we've already started kind of looking at those, knowing that it's a matter of time before we start receiving interest. We obviously have available land compared to some of our larger, more urbanized neighbors. So I think we're going down that road. I mean, generally, outside of that, staff is tracking with the conversations that are happening next door in Charles City. We're watching what's going on statewide. We are looking kind of across the nation as well as, you know, what other states and municipalities are doing. We've talked, I think Mesa, Arizona is doing zoning ordinance updates that include state of center language. And, you know, what are some of the studies and reports that they're trying to ask for upfront, whether that's a noise study, a thermal study? You know, I think one of the proposals from that zoning update or proposed zoning text update is noise studies for the first five years after certificate of occupancy to kind of get a base level of what the noise is, that we can have something to go off of. So I mean, we're generally tracking with it. I agree that, you know, we should be looking at it, and I think the staff, you know, us standing here, but Lindsay and Economic Development, the board, Mr. Moyer and all his counterparts are well aware of what's kind of moving and have started taking steps to address some of those concerns and how we want to handle those.
Do you see that there may be any need to augment, edit, or amend the comprehensive plan from whatever the completion of this study or master planning? Or do you think it can be accomplished all within the zoning context?
I think it's kind of twofold. I think it's, we should, especially if the board chooses to adopt the overlay district. You know, we should capture a comprehensive plan, and we have the ability every five years to, you know, update that document, whether it's a large update or just a minor update. So I think part of it will depend on what, you know, the board chooses to do with the results of that study. Some of it, I think, depends on what proposals we see between now and then. Obviously, we want the, you know, if we start seeing a lot of data center proposals, then, you know, we're going to potentially consider them, approve them, deny them, whatever it may be. We should reflect that in long-range plans for the county. But I think there's variables that go into that as to when that needs to be.
I think you would tend to agree that when we had the first solar farm, it was kind of the cart before the horse. And then we came up with a criteria for, or performance criteria for solar farms. I would think it'd be better to get the horse before the cart on a similar situation.
Yeah, I would agree with that. But ultimately, you know, we are tracking it. We know it's a matter of time because again, we have land, we have, you know, 230 KD lines that run through the middle of properties in the county that are in viable areas for data centers. You know, obviously, we, it's up to them to propose them. We're not out seeking them, but we're tracking.
Thank you, Chairman.
And as a follow-on, so as it stands today, there are no listed, are there any listed uses for data centers in the current zoning ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And if there's not, if one were to apply, would it automatically default to a CUP process?
As of right now, there is no listed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To elaborate on this a little bit, if you've not been to White Oak Technology Park, go there, take a Portuguese Road. There's a Meta Facebook plant, and there's two QTD plants. We have substation after substation after substation at Dominion's Building. You can throw a stone from one substation to the next. And for context, all of New Kent County is serviced by six or seven distribution circuits. There's a substation at White Oak with 26 distribution circuits feeding one building. That's the electrical load. And so the 230 lines that you mentioned, I don't know that they would be adequate if we brought it, so you may have to bring in more transmission lines, pull in more transmission structures and impacting, you know, other property owners, pulling more lines in. So there's a, it's more of an effect than just the area where the data center is being built itself. It could impact other property owners as well. But drive down there and see, we cannot build the substations fast enough for these data centers, and they are right next to each other. There's four substations now with two more under construction right there on Portuguese Road.
And can we satisfy the water demand for these?
Great question.
And I'm assuming with the consultant, they're just, this overlay district, as it were, is only based on suitability irrespective of all of the zoning that, you know, the parcels that are being looked at. Thank you. All right, on to Mr. Moyer.
I have nothing.
All right. Now on to staff reports, and I didn't bring it up earlier, I made a note to bring it up now, but I know in our agenda meeting a few weeks ago, we talked about maybe entertaining the concept or idea that Ms. Townsend had brought up about buffers. And so could you elaborate on that, Mr. Silva?
Given a more perfect tee-up, that's exactly what our main staff report was, or presentation was going to be for today. So I know there had been some recent interest in sort of crash course regarding information for the various situations in which buffer requirements might be triggered by the code, be it via subdivisions or as part of a site plan. So what staff is recommending be done is that prior to next month's meeting, we'll put together a sort of full summary email to y'all, kind of laying out buffers from A to Z as they currently stand in the code. And if there are sort of any follow-up questions, please direct those back to us, and we'd be happy to include that as a sort of follow-up materials for next month's meeting packet. And if even still, you know, there is the desire for a sort of more formal presentation at the Planning Commission meeting, so we can kind of have a verbal back and forth on the subject, that would be something that staff is more than happy to do as well. But to sort of tee off that conversation, sort of presenting a nice and concise summary of all the different scenarios in which buffers might be required, what they would look like, different forms they can take.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Ms. Townsend, do you have anything you want to add to that or?
No, I'm just tickled.
Okay. The one other thing I would give a heads up on is that as it stands right now, we just have one public hearing item that will be on the docket for the August meeting. This will be a proposed rezoning of the Matnon site near exit 211. There's a proposed rezoning from EO to Industrial for a portion of that site. So you'll be getting more information on that soon.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Silva.
Absolutely.
All right, with that, our next meeting will be on Monday, August 18th, at 6:30 PM in the boardroom here. And I believe we are done, unless anybody else has anything else to add? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
You have it.
So Mr. Bennett, a motion to adjourn. All right, we are adjourning at 7:07.